Good evening. It is Monday, March 16, 2020, at 7:03 PM. And I call this meeting of the Lansing City Council to order. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Betts.
Here.
Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein. Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Spatafor.
Right.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
There are eight members present at forum.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Is there anybody that council or mayor or the Clerk would like us to keep in our thoughts during the meditation and Pledge of Allegiance? Councilmember Wood.
Thank you. If we could remember the family of Ron Seka. Ron Seka is a retired Lansing Police Department detective who passed away from cancer. He had recently retired and has been battling cancer and died this past week. So if we could remember he and his family, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Betts.
As we make our deliberations this week and in the coming weeks, I think we need to keep in mind all these service workers and all the other workers who are going to be laid off or otherwise not have jobs or -- and the people who are going to be working during these trying times. I think that we appreciate everybody's service and we need to make sure that we can, as this council and as this body, serve them to the utmost integrity. It is so very important during these trying times that we make sure that they're taken care of. So, thank you.
And I would also -- I would add to that. First responders and healthcare providers and those suffering from the ongoing coronavirus, make sure we keep them in our thoughts because they are the ones battling this on the front lines for our communities. So, anyone else? Mr. -- Councilmember Jackson.
And I'll add our security staff, DK Security over there, especially Coach Caper in the corner. I know he's been keeping us safe for this whole time, so thank you.
Thank you. Please rise. Vice President Hussein.
Yes, I would move the printed council proceedings of February 24, 2020, as presented.
It's been moved. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And we are to the consideration of late items.
Mr. Vice President.
I move the suspension of council rule number nine in order to consider late items, which will be considered as part of the regular portion of the meeting to which they relate. The following items are as follows. Number one, a resolution suspending council rule 46 and allowing for virtual participation in council meetings. Resolution extending the mayor's declaration of an emergency until April 10, 2020. A resolution approving Brownfield Plan number 75. A resolution approving an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for 1611 East Kalamazoo Street. A resolution pertaining to a deficit elimination plan, special assessment capital project fund, the issuance and sale of 20 limited tax general obligation bonds for capital improvements. A resolution pertaining to the issuance and sale of refunding of building authority bonds and tax increment finance authority bonds. A resolution pertaining to the issuance and sale of limited tax general obligation refunding bonds. And the adoption of Lansing City Council COVID-19 exposure mitigation measures.
Thank you. Councilmember -- Vice President Hussein, I'll just add one modification. Item three was Brownfield Plan number 79, not 75. Just want to make sure. Regardless, I heard 75, but just want to make sure it's on the record correctly. Thank you. So this is an item that requires six votes, so we'll call a roll. Clerk.
Mr. --
Ms. -- Councilmember.
Could you explain to the audience listening why we're -- have all these late items? I would appreciate it.
Sure. All the late items have to do with the fact that we're planning on having a meeting next week, but the governor has just ordered a mandatory restriction of gatherings to fewer than 50 people. And also, the mayor has closed down City Hall during a state of emergency, so we're trying to minimize the amount of times that city council has to meet over the next few weeks. And all these items are items that need to be acted on before we would next meet, should our next meeting be canceled. So we are looking to move those forward quickly and feel comfortable in at least considering them for that action this evening. You're welcome. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Or do you -- all those opposed? Do you need a roll call vote? Motion carries.
We are to special ceremonies and presentations, and we have a number of presentations. The first one is regarding SLU 3 of 2019.
Councilmember Spitzley, is anyone here to present on 1315 Massachusetts Avenue's parking lot in the B Residential Zoning District?
It is my understanding that they are not.
Oh, there he is.
There he is. Okay. Yeah, raise your hand before I speak. Come down.
Sir, if you could come down to that table, click the button and make sure that your green light is on and give us a brief description of what we're looking at.
Okay. My name is Roger Downson. I'm the architect for the project. Capital Area Community Services runs Head Start at the old Grand River Elementary School. They want to purchase one parcel that used to have a house on it. It was taken down by the land bank some -- a year or so ago, and they wish to use it for parking. Part of the project also will be split about eight feet off because previously the two homes shared a drive, so we're trying to be able to sell -- or the land bank would then sell the eight feet on the north side to the adjoining property owner so they could then have a drive for their property and place to park. We're going to provide about 11 new parking spaces. The need is, there's just more staff for the elementary school -- or for the Head Start. When the school was built, you had one teacher per class. With Head Start, you have three staff per class. So there's just an abundant need for more parking there. So with this one vacant piece of property, it's right adjacent to the other parking on the property, so I'm here available for questions.
Thank you. Are there questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Spitzley.
Not just -- not more of a question, just a statement. It is also my understanding that, you know, the neighborhood has been canvassed around there, and they are generally supportive. And then that little piece that you talked about, the eight feet piece, is like -- is a buffer between the parking lot and the home next door to --
Right. It will be a buffer, and then we will be installing on our property a fence and some vegetation too to help buffer the residents to the north.
Other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much for your time this evening.
Okay. Our second presentation is regarding C-9 2019.
Councilmember Spitzley, the folks here are anywhere --
We were told -- we were told that those folks from FTZ Labs would not be showing up.
Okay. Very good.
And next is Brownfield Plan number 79.
I have representatives from the Michigan Realtors here.
There are extra chairs there if you need them. Please, if you could introduce yourselves by name and then tell us a little bit about what we're looking at here, please.
Thank you. My name is David Pearson, representing the Michigan Realtors. On my left, your right is Brian Westron, who's the General Counsel for the Michigan Realtors. And next to me also is JP Buckingham from Tritera, who is the environmental firm that prepared the Brownfield Plan that's before you tonight. In brief, to introduce you to the Michigan Realtors, who have had a headquarters for many years in the city of Lansing, it's an organization with 30,000 members around the state, and they want to bring them here. It's an organization that works through committees, task forces, and also, in the last few years, has dramatically expanded its continuing education programs. And the difficulty is, is that the current building is really, at best, set up for staff only. Meetings are extremely difficult. Building's been renovated twice, and there's really not anything more to do with it. What we're hoping with this Brownfield to do is two things. One is to have a third -- the first two floors would be sufficient for staff and to allow them to work in a better environment. It's the third floor that's the focus. That is space for continuing education and for events as well, both for the Realtors and then for other statewide organizations who are looking for space, frankly, to bring their members to Lansing as well. In addition, we have worked with the Lansing Public Service Department on a streetscape plan. It started out with initially expanded landscape simply along the Realtor's side of the street. And I realize you don't -- I think you have in your packet all of the photographs. I don't know if there's -- No, we're not being considered. It initially started with an improved streetscape on the -- it would be on the east side of Washington and the block. We met with Andy Kilpatrick, who pointed out, frankly, there's a difficulty. We're going to come through in somewhere between five and 10 years and then replace the sewer there and kill all of those trees and take apart your sidewalk. So what he suggested was a cooperative plan, which is what's proposed here. And that would have the Realtors, as part of this project, redo the streetscape on both sides at the corner. Washington Avenue at the corner of Saginaw is two extra lanes wide, the way it was when it was a two-way street. Saginaw is not planned to be a two-way street for anybody's plans. And so the idea is to change the lanes and to bring the curbs in and to plant those areas to put in the sort of paving that we have in Rio Town and in different places in Old Town in order to improve the streetscape. That will go as far, about a third of the block on both sides, meaning that on the one side, the Realtors' headquarters, on the other side, Durant Park. And it would be a real improvement for Durant Park. When public service comes through and does the sewer work, they will then complete the streetscape for the remainder of the block. So that would give us a coherent streetscape and frankly, do two things. One, it's the first real project for the Saginaw Corridor, which everybody has been hoping would produce something. This is quite real. The other thing that it does is that Washington, from that point, is the road to Old Town. And only the block at Grand River has been improved in Old Town. This would then start this at the southern end with the hopes that in the future, that could be extended through the remaining blocks. That's, in basic terms, the plan. The plan as proposed would allow the funding of those improvements. The Realtors would pay for those and be paid back over the course of nine years, as projected, through the tax increment financing that's in the plan. I guess I'd like to give Brian a minute to tell you a little bit more about the association.
Thank you, councilmembers. So one of the things that we're really excited about with Michigan Realtors is obviously that third floor. Currently, with our education endeavors and sort of ramping up our value proposition to membership, we end up having a lot of our education off-site in other cities, quite frankly, because we have to have a regional aspect to the Realtors around the state. This would provide us with a central location and the space to bring upwards of 250 people into our building to have those education sessions and obviously to also, you know, enjoy the other aspects of Lansing, you know, the many partners that we have with the catering obligations that we currently have. We look forward to enhancing those and working with the various partners in Old Town, Rio Town, and Lansing proper.
The one thing I should add in terms of the streetscape is, is that there is currently a large driveway on Saginaw, which will be closed. That will be landscaped and screened, and the parking will be pushed back and will be smaller. And so the Saginaw streetscape will also be pretty dramatically improved through these improvements. I think in terms of the Brownfield, if you have questions, JP's here to address those, and I don't know if you want him to go through any summary.
Why don't you do a summary for the council, please?
Yeah. If that powerpoint could.
And we'll put the PowerPoint back up. Takes a minute.
So, um, and let's see. So going back, this gives you an idea of the location of the property.
Sure. I'm sorry to interrupt. If you could --
Sorry.
It's not ideally set up for this.
That's fine. Gotcha. So this gives you a visual. And in your package, you should have had a -- some other pictures on the end of it of what the proposed building's going to look like and other locations, as well as the actual street and how it's going to be narrowed down. But really quick, it just indicates the eligible status of it being a functionally obsolete building. That corner building right there is what was identified as functionally obsolete, 700 North Washington on September 17. Gives you a little bit of heating cooling systems, the -- what makes that building not functional. Overall, it's a nine-year plan. Of the $99,200 of investment, $536,276 is what's currently proposed for reimbursement to the developer. It's going to be demolition of the functionally obsolete building. And the entire 1.46 acres will be redeveloped to include a three-story, 19,443 square-foot building. We talked a little bit about third floor, streetscape, improved landscaping sidewalks is a big component to it. And obviously, the visible gateway property. Real quick, here on your taxes, you see the portion that's being passed through the Saginaw Street corridor improvement, which is one of -- is the first project to -- that we can take advantage of to improve the Saginaw Street. See what's being passed through to school, debt, Capitolary District Library. Portion captured by the Lansing Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and as well as the portion that's being captured for their administration and their local Brownfield Revolving Fund. And this gives you an idea, just a breakdown, of the non-environmental activities. Estimated, you see the infrastructure improvements of that, $163,000 is going to the public improvement. Contingency of the unknown. Zero percent interest is being captured. And that gives you the breakdown. There's a picture of that location, building, some other photos of the area. There's that drive you were talking about, David. Landscaping, the treescape along Washington. And this is another visual of the -- of what that -- what the street's going to look like and what's proposed there. And I think that also narrowing that down, you know, you walk through that sidewalk right now, it's pretty -- it's quite a distance to get from one area all the way to the Durant Park. So I think shrinking that will make a big difference. And that's -- that's to the most -- what we're going to do.
Very good. Thank you. Are there questions from the councilmembers? Councilmember Betts.
In times of meniscus, financial duress, it's really important that we ensure that we have as much revenue as possible coming into the city. With this Brownfield, we would be, in essence, not be collecting revenue from you in exchange for some project benefits, some projected benefits. Now, that money would otherwise be going towards public services. So what are you providing within this Brownfield that is a benefit to the people of Lansing beyond just landscaping? And that's the question I have for you.
Really, I would point to two things in particular, and I should point out that the current taxable value of the combined properties is $400,000. And the estimated taxable value when the project is completed, if it's built out to its full size as proposed here, would be two to two and a half.
So you're not going to build the building if you don't get this Brownfield? That's what you're claiming?
It would be substantially modified.
How substantially modified are we talking?
The third floor that really is what we're looking at, that plus the streetscape.
How much would that reduce the taxable value of the building?
There's not an exact number, but the big difference that it would make is that we would not be bringing people here from around the state for meetings. So currently, what we have is a fairly inadequate space for staff. We could rebuild and build an adequate space for staff, which would make them more effective. But we're still in a position where members from around the state don't come here. And as it is, they're in the unfortunate position of repeatedly holding meetings elsewhere when they really want them here. It brings people here, using the restaurants, and then the Realtors also, as Brian mentioned, for their catering, use local vendors. In fact, I think you have a letter from one of the caterers, as well as a letter from the people who we use for graphics, as well as for the educational materials that are used in the continuing education programs. So it really allows, we think, a benefit in that sense, not just on the property tax side, where there are immediate pass-throughs, but also in terms of the people we bring here. The total investment would be $9.2 million. The total Brownfield is 500 -- about $550,000. And so it's a relatively small percentage. You had asked in the committee meeting, and I would repeat it, well, so how does that make the difference? And the answer is, when you're trying to do the next thing, to get to the next level, every increment makes a difference. And so that's really the difference that this makes.
Okay. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Other questions? Mr. Mayor and then the folks. Thank you, Mr. President. I want to play the role of LEAP. LEAP is not here. They are not coming in, so I want to play the role of LEAP. And Councilwoman Spitzley has their analysis. I want to add to that, not to go back and forth, but we also, as a result of our Brownfield policy, which we initiated middle of, end of last year, there is a 10% pass-through. So with the Brownfield plan in place, everything going upwards, yes, a lot of it is captured, and everything Mr. Pearson said is correct, but there's also a 10% pass-through. So not only us, but the county and everyone else that gets captured will see an increase. It's not the same increase, and again, if the project wasn't done or the third floor wasn't done, it would be different numbers. But there will still be that increase, and if the LEAP staff were here, they would point that out. Thank you. Councilmember Spitzley, then Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, Mr. President. And to add on to what the mayor was saying, we do have a letter of support from LEAP for this Brownfield plan. We have a letter of support from the Chair of Lansing Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. And we also have a letter of support from the Greater Lansing Convention and Visitors Bureau. So those are all in your packets. A couple other things to point out is that it's for nine -- it's for nine years. Is that correct?
Yes.
So after nine years, you know, the building hopefully will still be viable when it fully goes on the tax rolls. There was one other thing I wanted to -- I wanted to make -- well, that -- I think that was the important thing, that it is for 10 years or nine years, and then after that, it, you know, the full taxable value goes back on the tax rolls. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Councilmember Wood.
Thank you. I have a question, but before I ask my question, I just want to make sure and declare that I was endorsed by the Greater Lansing Realtors Association. This is the Michigan Realtors Association, so there is a difference. So I did want to make sure that that was out there and ask the city attorney if he sees any conflict so that I can move forward with my question.
Me too.
No, not on that -- those grounds. Obviously, any council member can raise the issue and ask for a vote.
Yeah, okay. Having made that declaration, the question I have is, the agreement that was signed with LEAP for the Brownfield also includes the union labor piece in that, and was that signed by you as part of that?
Yes. The Universal Development Agreement--
Yes.
-- to the city's form has been signed.
Okay.
And obviously, we intend to abide by that agreement.
All right. Thank you. I want that on the record. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Hussein.
Just for the record, if I missed it, I apologize. In terms of the $536,000 of eligible capture, can you tell us how much the public benefit -- or I should say, how much of that is comprised with public benefit expenditures?
I guess, to be fair, the direct public benefit in terms of the streetscape--
Yes.
-- is $163,000. We think the public benefit is larger than that. Well, I should say, the portion that the Realtors actually take, once you take out the various administrative fees and pass-throughs that go to LEAP and to the Brownfield Authority, is substantially lower than the $536,000. And the plan doesn't include any interest. But beyond that, it would be the other changes, closing the driveway on Saginaw, replanting that whole area, because there's an LCC parking lot between us and Grand Avenue. So we don't -- we can't remake everything, but once you go down Saginaw, as it comes down the hill to Grand Avenue, you're right there where you can get onto the River Trail that's on the west side. I think LEAP has some hopes that we can come back with something else later in order to make an even better connection, but at least it dramatically improves that portion. And I can tell you, for people who are pedestrians along Saginaw, it makes a big difference, not having that opening, trying to figure out where the cars are coming at you.
And just very quickly, I want to thank the administration, as well as our economic development team, both in planning as well as LEAP. I think, you know, if you look at 5400 Dunkle, if you look at VDS Project on West Holmes and now this, I think this is significant. This is something new we've seen over the last year or two in terms of the public benefit piece. I think it's huge. I think we have long discussed innovative ways of making these types of things happen so that we are seeing, you know, adjacent properties, you know, property values rise, so that we're seeing blade elimination, so that we're seeing, you know, enhancement of areas and things of that nature. So I really appreciate this piece. Thank you.
I have a couple things, and then we're going to move on to Councilmember Wood and Councilmember Betts, and then we'll close this out. Two things. One, can you talk about the Brownfield eligible activities as it pertains to an functionally obsolete building? You're talking about your building or the one next to it, where you're building the new building? Or both?
The building on the corner is the one which the assessor termed "functionally obsolete."
And that would be where the Brownfield -- the Brownfield eligible activity is tearing that building down?
Yeah. So the demolition is there, but in addition, there's site work--
The site work as well.
-- on the entire--
Okay.
-- because there's a much larger parking lot that was there with the Gary Building.
Gotcha.
And so it is--
Adjoining and functionally -- or adjoining and contiguous. Sorry. When you have one parcel is considered the Brownfield, it's functionally obsolete, then you also have the adjoining and contiguous parcels that allow the whole development--
That parking lot. Okay. Thank you.
I should mention, it takes in, there are -- there were three very rundown houses on Madison. And those were bought and demolished in order to make them part of the site so that the whole block can be redeveloped. They were simply beyond savings.
And my final question, I've heard, I've had discussions with you all, the efforts you're making towards environmental friendliness of your facility. Can you speak to that briefly?
It's primarily, it is dramatically improving the landscaping to rebuild the parking lots in a way that will improve the drainage. In addition, the sewer and water will be upgraded on the site. The building itself, the third floor, has substantial planting on it, which is planned. It's not a true green roof in the sense that it takes the drainage and treats it all there. I don't know how to describe it other than we couldn't afford one of those.
Right.
But it really adds quite a bit on the third floor as well.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Wood.
With the addition of the landscaping, is that something, then, that you will be maintaining in the future, or is that something that you're expecting the city to maintain?
That will be maintained by the Realtors. If you go past the current building, when we were asking the assessor to come, one of the wags at Tritera said you might want to get out there with some roundup, because they do such a dramatically great job with their landscaping. I'm hoping that if you get a chance to look at that, it'll give you an idea of what they'll be doing in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Betts.
Thank you, President Spatafor. One last question. What -- so having people come into the city is great, but I want to make sure that they're spending money in the city as well. That's an important part of an economic impact. So what plans do you have in place to ensure that your conference attendees are spending money in the city?
Yeah. It's a very good question. Oftentimes, these types of events, whether they're education and/or convention-type events, they will have overnights. Obviously, we're going to be ramping up the use of our catering vendors, which will also lead to an increase in spending on that front. But the goal would be to bring people to Lansing, to familiarize them with the central location. Whether they're overnighting, obviously, we have residents of our staff that live in Lansing, but we also have people that come in, obviously, just for the workday. The experience-- The experience that our staff has had in the current building, without a doubt, has sort of exhausted many of the staff members, so they're very excited about this new project. But it goes without saying, if you look at, go back to the landscape question, Michigan Realtors, in the course of the last 10 years, has invested a substantial amount in that Saginaw to Madison block because we do believe that Durant Park needs to be a focal point for families and for people to recreate. And we want that to be beautiful. We want the street skate to be beautiful, and we want it to be a draw. We want it to be a gateway to go into Old Town, and we want it to be something that people view as transformational on that corner.
Very cool. Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, we thank you for your time this evening.
Appreciate it.
Our next presentation is SLU, regarding SLU 1.
Councilmember Spitzley, do we
Thank you, Mr. President. Do we have anybody here regarding the tower?
Now you're done.
Come down. Yes, I don't know if they can. This is for a special land use permit for between 1220 and 1306 North Homer Street, Telecommunications Tower Metro Fiber Net LLC. They will be leasing property from the Lansing Board of Water and Light. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. So like you said, we're leasing a small piece of property on the BWL pump site. My name is Jim Rude. I'm a project manager overseeing construction for fiber
Jim, I'm sorry, Mr. Rude. Just real quick, there's information in your packet and pictures and stuff as well.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Please proceed. Apologize.
That's okay. I'm a project manager overseeing construction of a fiber network we're putting in and around the city of Lansing. Part of this development is this small site. We're putting in some communication huts, which house our routers, switches, multiplexers, equipment I probably can't even turn on. So this goes to our customer, and we're asking for a special use permit for this pole. It's a large metal pole. It'll stick out of the ground 79 feet, and we've repurposed it to hold a UHF and a DHF antenna. This only receives local channels that we will use to give to our customers. So that's basically it in a nutshell.
Are there any questions for our friends here from Metronet? Councilmember Wood.
One of the things that when we adopted the ordinance on cell towers was the co-mingling. Are you going to have any co-mingling on your tower, or is it just for your use?
Just for our use. We don't have any small cells. We don't have any microwave anything on it, just for us.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, President Spitzer. How does it look? Just a metal pole sticking up? Can you describe that?
It's, yeah, it's like a big wooden telephone pole, but it's made out of metal. It's 90 feet in length. We buried 11 feet of it, and so 79 feet is above ground. But it's a Class H2 pole, I guess, if you want to classify it, or that's the class it is.
Thank you very much. Seeing no further questions, I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much.
Our next presentation is regarding the Oprah certificate for 1611 East Kalamazoo Street, Allen Neighborhood Center Holdings.
Joan, if you'd like to join us at the table?
So this is for the certification for the Oprah. They've already had their Oprah designation, and so tonight, the action will be on approval of certification.
Certification. Right. Thank you. And thank you all for the opportunity to come and speak in support of this. You know, as Councilmember Spitzley pointed out, we were here in the fall, and you approved the 1600 block for district designation. Now we need the certificate. All of this will make possible the creation of Allen Place. And as most of you know at this point, Allen Place is a project that we have been describing as at the intersection of health and food and housing and environmental innovation. We intend to renovate the existing two-story building as well as build a new 10,000-square-foot, three-story-tall west wing, a new build on the western end of the existing complex. What that will enable us to do is to offer 21 units of age-friendly and mixed-income apartments, four studio, nine one-bedroom, and eight two-bedroom. And in addition, that actually totals a little over 18,000 square feet of housing. In addition, we will be able to fill about 24,000 square feet of commercial space. As most of you know, Allen Neighborhood Center has been nearly the sole occupant in the Kircher Complex, what was formerly known as the Kircher Complex, for at least a year and a half. Most of the building has been empty for 10 years. The upstairs, the second floor of the current building, has been completely empty for nearly 15 years. It was visited by the assessor, who declared it functionally obsolete some months ago. And at this point, truly, Allen Neighborhood Center occupying that middle swath is just about the only entity on the block. We're excited about the possibility of age-friendly housing. We know that there's a shortage of housing that is both age-friendly and affordable for people on the east side who are 55 and older. They will not be the exclusive occupants of this development. We will, though, make sure that we let a lot of those people who are interested in living in a complex where design facilitates social interaction, gives them access to a lot of services, online services, you know, community room, access to computers, and online, actually, a weekly onsite farmer's market, tons of cooking workshops and gardening workshops and whatnot. But there will be the full lifecycle represented in that complex. The commercial entities, at this point, number about seven, and they are primarily food and health-related entities. We're really excited to be opening, in one of those ground-floor units, an accelerator kitchen for graduates of our incubator kitchen program. The first four to occupy the accelerator have already been selected. We're excited. They're excited. And in addition, we're looking at inking leases with a small grocery, a health-related enterprise, culinary school, and an ice cream shop. That was for me. And it will be the death of me, but in any case, it's pretty exciting. So you all know that we are a small nonprofit, and so having an Oprah helps a whole lot with cash flow for this project and for the ultimate feasibility of the entire project. So I'm open to questions.
Are there any questions for Joan? Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just noting for the record that we have a letter here from LEAP in support of the consideration of the Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act certificate for Allen Place. The duration is 12 years from the completion of the project, and that's the comment I have.
Other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much, Joan. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Okay, and we have, our next presentation is for the payment of taxes for Porter Senior Apartments.
Is anyone here from the Porter Senior Apartments wishing to speak?
No, they are not here.
Very good. Thank you. Moving on.
Okay, we are two comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
I'm sorry, Mr. President. Before we move on, just kind of for like a procedural thing, so for the entities that were not here to provide testimony for the public hearing, we're just going to kind of let it lay and keep it open. Is that the word I need to use?
I had a conversation with the attorney for one of the presentations also scheduled for a public hearing on Porter Street. The client is southwest and couldn't make it. I see no reason why you couldn't open the public hearing, take whatever comments there are, and then there is a continuing
Okay. And we're going to do that for both, both FTZ Labs and for the Porter, so we're just going to hold it open. And so at which time, they can come and make a presentation, and then we'll move it then.
Move it to a definite date, though.
Yeah, right.
So you don't have to re-notice it.
Are there any comments by councilmembers? Mr. Mayor? Or Mr. Clerk? Sorry.
Thank you, President Spitzer. I just want to thank all of my election workers and everyone who worked so diligently to make our election last week a success. With everything that has happened in the past week, it feels like it was an entire lifetime ago. So it's hard to believe it was only six days ago. But thank you for everyone who participated. A lot of hours go into an election. This was a true test with the implementation in a large turnout election of the changes brought about by Proposal 3. We had, rather than the dozen or so people register on Election Day like we had in the city elections, we had in the hundreds. So I really appreciate everyone's work and dedication. We are to
Councilmember Wood.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention a couple of cancellations. The Rejuvenating South Lansing, that meeting is on March 24th, has been canceled. We also received information from Churchill Downs that their meeting is canceled. They hold that at Wainwright School. Because the schools are canceled, their meeting is canceled as well.
Also, I will note that the Joint Board of Water and Light meeting with the City Council Committee of the Hall for March 30th has been canceled as well.
This should also be, sorry, Colonial Village and Neighbors Association meeting for this Wednesday has been canceled as well.
Sir Jackson, what would you like to cancel?
My constituent contact meeting, that's every fourth Saturday of the month, is canceled.
Anyone else want to cancel? Okay. Mr. Clerk.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience with a community event that they would like to announce or to announce the cancellation of? We are to speaker registration for public comment on show cause hearings and legislative matters. Show cause hearings is the green sheet, and if you are the owner of that property, you would have received a notice at home, and you need to sign in in the next minute or so if you wish to speak before the hearing. And then the blue sign-in sheet is for legislative matters, which includes all of the scheduled public hearings. It includes all of the resolutions for action on the agenda and the ordinances for adoption. And it does also include all nine of the late items. So we'll be picking those up in just about a minute. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I don't want to repeat what I talked about in Committee of the Hall, but there's a whole variety of things that I want to add to it. First, for all those watching, don't forget, good hygiene, social separation. If you don't know that already, then you are not reading the newspaper, you are not looking at the news, you're not talking to anybody. Please do that. The city is, as of tomorrow morning, under an emergency order. City facilities will be closed. You can go to lansingmi.gov/coronavirus for information on phone numbers and how you can reach city officials. Our community centers are closed. Parks and Recreation programming is canceled, so I'll add to the cancel parade. Fines for non-payment of fees during this time will be waived, so don't worry about that. We are working with the homeless shelters and hospitals to treat people who are sick and to make sure we're quarantining and hoteling. There are newer problems, which we're continuing to address. We are working with all of those communities. If you are on a City of Lansing board or commission, you'll get notification, but we are canceling all of those unless there is urgent business. If there's something that's financial, or a permit, or a planning, or something like that that needs to happen, then the meeting will happen. But if it's not urgent business, then that will be canceled. If you're an advisory board, it will likely be canceled unless there is decision-making. The food pantry, the mobile food pantry, is still happening. We talked about this with precautions. So that, we will announce in the next day or two so the public has that information. We're working with the schools and the gap feeding program. The governor's office has been working with us. We're working with the health director. I've been in contact with the East Lansing mayor. Congresswoman Alyssa Slotkin has been fantastic. If you're a small business and you are having issues, Congresswoman Slotkin was part of an appropriation, so please call the Small Business Administration in Detroit or Grand Rapids, and they can help you with loans, or they can help you with other resources, or if you have a loan, they can extend it. So please talk to them if you're a small business and you are being hurt by this, which I assume you are. I think everyone knows bars and restaurants are closed, or gyms, theaters, and other places where people are congregating. I will announce that the city was accepted to the Bloomberg Harvard Local Response Initiative for Coronavirus. So we're going to be participating in that so we can work with other communities throughout the country. I don't know much more about that, because I just got the email about an hour ago. And the state does have a Coronavirus hotline, which is 888-535-6136, or you can go to michigan.gov/coronavirus. So that's everything I'm going to add to what I said before.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Clerk.
Okay, we are to show cause hearings. We have one show cause hearing and consideration of orders to make, save, or demolish 1522 West Holmes Road.
Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Mr. President. So what we have before us is a show cause hearing. Make, save, or demolish 1522 West Holmes Road. The code enforcement officer noted to the committee that the single-family home was in front of the demolition board on September 26, 2019, where they made a decision for a make, save, or demolish in 30 days. The documents noted the building was valued at $52,200, and the estimated cost of repairs came in at $119,000. So concluded by stating, they had, I'm sorry, the code enforcement officer concluded by stating they had not had any contact with the owner, and there has been no work or no application for permits. So then he then asked for a 60 days make, save, or demolish. With that, I'll move the resolution.
Resolution has been moved by Councilmember Garza. Is there further discussion on the I'm sorry. This is just a public hearing? Thank you.
There are no members
Sorry.
Signed in to speak on the show cause hearings, so do the referral of the show cause hearing number one.
General claims. Public safety.
Okay, now we are to public comment on legislative matters, which includes, as I indicated, the late items, the resolutions for action, and the two ordinances, as well as the following public hearings. Number one, Z9, 2019, 3440 Northeast Street. Number two, SLU 1, 2020, for 1220 and 1306 North Homer Street. Number three, Obsolete Property Rehabilitation for 1611 East Kalamazoo Street. Number four, Brownfield Plan Number 79, 700 North Washington. Number five, payment of taxes for Porter Senior Apartments. Number six, SLU 3 of 2019, 1315 Massachusetts Avenue. Number seven, an amendment to Chapter 294 to eliminate the requirement that the city attorney be the legal advisor to the Police and Fire Retirement Board. And number eight, an ordinance to eliminate the requirement that the city attorney be the legal advisor for the Employees Retirement System Board. And I believe we have had overviews of most of these.
Yeah, let's move on. Does anyone, any councilmember need any further information on the public hearings in front of us?
Okay, and the only
Councilmember Wood.
I just wanted to state that we will be voting on the two public hearings dealing with the retirement boards this evening
Yes.
Later in the agenda.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also, we will be voting on Item A 3 in consideration of the Oprah certificate for 1611 East Kalamazoo Street, and also A 4 in consideration of Brownfield Plan Number 79, 700 North Washington, Michigan Realtors Redevelopment Project.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Okay, the two people that signed in, I believe, were, actually made their remarks under present under presentations, but I'll call them just to make sure I didn't make an error there. Roger Donaldson, do you have anything further to add?
I don't know if it's proper or not, but since the planning commission recommended approval of our special use permit, and seeing that there's no other comments on it, I didn't know if there's a way that maybe this action on this could be taken tonight, seeing the city hall will be closing, we won't have the planning committee meet again. I know it may be slightly out of step, but it would then allow the owner to continue with the purchase agreement with the land bank and to keep the project going forward.
Thank you, sir.
And Miguel Rodriguez.
Hello, I'm Miguel Rodriguez. I'm the Director of Kepler Community Services, and I just want to say I want to thank the city for their continued support of this project. As far as what this project means to CACS, trying to put a face for both our staff and our parents, the biggest benefits we see of this project is, one, is it allows for a safer area in terms of it will increase the amount of space that parents will have to drop off and pick up their children. It will also create additional space for our staff to park so that, as you all know, when you're loading or unloading your car with supplies and materials, sometimes it can get a little hectic and the door stays open a little bit longer. This allows staff to actually park in the parking lot, take care of their business and not worry about traffic that is whizzing through the neighborhood. So in terms of it'll be safer for our staff. And finally, it continues our investment into that Grand River property. As I said, we've done some different repairs as far as the roof and some other landscape improvements, so this just adds to building within that community. So again, I want to thank you for your support and that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, that was our last speaker. And we are to the referral of the public hearings. Number one, Z9, 2019.
Hold that public hearing open until 4/27.
Number two, SLU1 of 2020.
Developmental planning. I'm sorry, Committee of the Whole.
Number three, Oprah at 1611 East Kalamazoo Street.
We're going to hold that for passage this evening.
Number four, Brownfield Plan number 79.
Hold for passage.
Number five, pilot for Porter Senior Apartments.
Hold that public hearing open until April 27.
SLU, number six, SLU3, 2019.
Committee of the Whole.
Number seven, the Police and Fire Retirement System Board.
That's for passage this evening.
And number eight, the Employees Retirement System Board.
Also for passage this evening.
Okay, we are to legislative matters and resolutions for action by the Committee on General Services.
Councilmember Hussein.
The first resolution before you pertains to a claim disposition. This is for claim number 1756 for $4,955 in trash fees at 1320 Vermont Avenue. We originally took this up in general services on February 25th, and we learned that a roofing job had taken place at this particular address. No permit had been pulled for the job. There was no construction dumpster on site and shingles were, were left everywhere. They were left on the subject property, they were left on the adjacent neighbors, both to the east and to the west, both of their properties. And so what ended up happening was Code actually got a call from both neighbors to come out and take a look. Due to the number of shingles that were on the property, but also access and egress issues with the adjacent properties, they actually ordered an emergency cleanup. And so our contractor arrived, I believe, on October 4th and they did abate. They were authorized for, I can't remember how much they were authorized for, but in terms of the bill, I think there were 1,815 cubic yards of construction material that was billed to the city. The admin fee was 265, so that amounted to $4,955 that was charged back to the applicant. There were really two issues we took a look at as a committee. Number one, the individual before us was David Vincent, and the question was whether or not he had legal standing as, as the claimant and part of our committee process. And the second piece was that there was the contention that the amount of debris billed for was not the amount of debris removed. And so we did have the city attorney opine with regard to Mr. Vincent's legal standing. And it was, this is a very interesting case in that Mr. Vincent was the original contractor for the roofing job. He subcontracted out the work. In the middle of the process, he then was deemed to be the registered agent. And then on December 30th of last year, he actually filed a transfer affidavit with the city assessor's office. And we have always been told as part of our general services deliberations that the individual that is the owner at the time of the incident is the only individual that has legal standing before the committee. And that if a subsequent owner wants to take issue with any fees or fines from the city pertaining to that incident, they need to take it up with the prior owner or they need to go to small claims court. In this case, because of the unique aspect, aspects involved, the city attorney's office did believe that this individual had legal standing to file the claim. The second piece was that our housing inspector actually stepped up and said, look, you know, we, we only have one picture. It's a truck, 25 yards of waste. It's clear that that truck is full. Because our contractor did not take pictures of the additional debris that was removed, he actually suggested that we take the amount of cubic yards billed, I think it was down from eight, 1,815 to 825 cubic yards. And so that is the motion that was considered, that was the motion that was approved to grant the claim the amount of $1,255 and deny, and to deny the balance of $3,700. So with that being said, I would move the resolution.
Resolution has been moved. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item B. Councilmember Hussein.
This is a claim disposition, claim number 1757. This deals with AAA Properties Inc. for $716.80. This was for an emergency board up at 1722 West Miller. You probably recall, there was a homicide with four other gunshot victims. This was on October 27, 2019, in the 1700 block of West Miller. There was a large party, roughly 200 individuals. The shooting occurred at about 1:30 a.m. It should be noted that this property has historic issues with large parties and things of that nature. In any event, our on-call Code Officer was called out by the Lansing Police Department due to the property being open and accessible. The Lansing Police Department, although they are not required to do so, they did work to contact the property owner. They were unable to get ahold of the property owner, probably because he was fast asleep. This was at about 2:00 in the morning. In any event, at that point, we did call out Pro Soil, who was our contractor. They did perform the emergency board up. The $716, it's comprised of $316.80 in supplies, $135 in labor, which adheres to the provisions of the contract, and then also $265 in admin fees. Our claims review committee did hear this on January 29th. They denied. We had the applicant in. We saw no reason to grant the appeal, so we, we denied in full as well. So with that being said, I would move the resolution to deny the claim appeal and the amount of $716.80.
Motion before us is to deny the appeal. Is all those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item C, Councilmember.
This resolution deals with claim number 1758. This is for Jesus de la Torre Bebra for $4,271 in trash fees at 523 Cherry Street. The incident date was, I'm sorry, August 28, 2019. The compliance date was September 4, 2019. We had our Code Officers back out on the 5th of that same month. The issues had not been abated, and so we had our contractor out to abate on 9/20/2019. This property owner does have a history of trash and grass violations. We did have the claimant into our general service committee on February 25th. He admitted a leaving debris out for months, I believe, a few months, because he was out of town for work and also said that he was waiting for enough debris to fill a 40-yard dumpster, to have that dumpster delivered. Two issues at hand here were, number one, the claimant had claimed he didn't get mailing in a timely manner and that although the claimant was denying he should be charged, he has an issue, or not, sorry, denying he should be charged, he had an issue with the amount that he was being charged for. So again, we took a look at this February 25th. We found that all correction notices and subsequent bills were sent to the mailing addresses on record, that they were set in a timely manner. There is a possibility, however, that this claimant was not receiving the mail in a timely manner because he, we believe he lives elsewhere. And then the other piece was that there are a number of issues with his porch, missing steps, steps that are not safe, and so we believe that the post office may be having a difficult time delivering his mail. In any event, preauthorization was for 60 cubic yards of waste and 14 hours of work, which is in line with the work that was done and the work that was billed for, based on the pictures and, and the other, the other evidence that we vetted, we move to deny the claim in the full amount of $4,271. So with that said, I'd move the resolution.
Resolution for us is to deny the claim. All those, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, Councilmember Hussein.
So the claim disposition number 1769, this is for Sue Lover for $2,763 in trash fees at 3410 South Waverly Road. This was an interesting case. This property and the adjacent property, which is the gas station at West Holmes and South Waverly, were cited for trash. And much of the trash was in this, this wooded ditch, kind of in between the properties, but it was believed to be owned by the claimant. The claimant did provide, at the time of our committee deliberation surveys, legal surveys, and we compared those against the photos of the debris's billed for, and it was apparent, it was apparent that the bulk of the debris that was removed wasn't actually not on the claimant's property. So at that point, our housing inspector, who is Scott Sanford, you know, he took a look at the photos, took a look at the surveys. We conferred with city council and city attorney, and he actually made the suggestion that we dropped the contractor fees, I believe it was to $195 for work completed, and then, and then he wanted to maintain the administration fees. So that's where, if you look at the resolution, what we're looking to do is to grant the claim the amount of, I think it's $2,303, and to deny the balance of $460, which includes the admin fee and the $195 for debris removed from her, her property. So with that being said, I'd move the resolution.
Resolution before us is to deny the claim. Number 1769, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries.
The next resolution deals with claim number 1761. This is for Michael Hot Wagner for $440 in trash fees at 1608 Comfort Street.
Go ahead.
Are we good?
Okay.
So we cited for trash and debris on October 28th. The compliance date was November 4th. We rechecked on November 5th, and we had our contractor out to abate on November 7th. This deals with trash that was left between, a very minimal amount of trash, as you can see, between the sidewalk and the curb, so in the public right of way. In any event, the reason for the appeal was that the claim, sorry, the claimant said that the, the mail wasn't received. And the other piece was, he was arguing that he had put that out, we should have known he had put that trash out, for individuals to come. I think it included plastic wheels, it included snow blower covers, I don't know if you guys can remember what else was out there, but there were things of value and he was hoping that people would stop by and grab them. In any event, we did have the CRC vet this on January 23rd. They denied in full. They had deemed that the mailing was in fact sent correctly and that all policies were followed with fidelity. We looked at it on March 10th. We learned that the claimants do still own that property, they have actually moved it next door, that as well as the trash being left at the curb was left in boxes and included plastic wheels, the snow blow covers and the like. The intention, you know, as we saw, was to provide items for free to the public, which we could appreciate. We had to explain, however, though, that is still in violation of Code. By the time the contractor got out, two-thirds of the items have been in fact removed. However, the $175 for contract services, that's actually the minimum amount, because I, I believe that's one hour and three cubic yards of waste. So the $175, in terms of our housing inspector, that was the recommendation that we, that we denied the, the claim and the amount of $175, but that we actually removed the administration fee. So with that being said, I would move the resolution.
The resolution before us is to deny claim 1761. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
We are to the Committee on Personnel.
Vice President Hussein.
So this resolution deals with council staff fringe benefits amendments and personnel rule updates. The resolution is in your folder. I'm going to read very quickly. From this, if you look at items 1, 2, and 3, I'm sorry, 1, 2, 3, and 4, that's actually what I'm reading from. The resolution before you deals with, number one, the Time Bank and the elimination of the Time Bank, the council staff compensatory, I cannot say that word, Time Bank program described in Article 4, Section B of the council staff personnel rules is eliminated, and the Time Bank balance that accrued prior to 2009 will no longer be available for use. Two, retirement healthcare. There should be no retiree health insurance plan or retirement, retirement healthcare for newly hired employees in the council staff positions on or after February 15, 2020. Three, pension plans. New employees hired on or after February 15, 2020 shall not be eligible for membership in or benefits under the Employees Retirement System. Four, the new employees, employees who are eligible shall become participants in the city's defined contribution plan, which shall include the following defined contribution plan features. Mandatory employer pickup contributions, 5%. Employee one-time pre-tax irrevocable pickup election of 0 to 6%. A new provision that employer will match the employee's voluntary one-time pickup election dollar for dollar up to a maximum of 6% compensation. And that the vesting schedule for new employees will be 33% of the employer contribution account upon completion of one defined contribution plan year of service, 66% of employer contribution account with completion of two defined contribution plan years of service, and 100% of employer contribution account with completion of three defined contribution plan, sorry, years of service. Other changes that we took a look at in terms of the personnel committee's process dealt with changes that were made in April of last year, but they were never actually approved by this body. Deals with the striking of several positions that we either historically have not hired for, or we haven't hired for in quite some time. And in all related language that pertains to those particular positions. I'm sure Councilman Spatafor put the bulk, the bulk of the fringe benefit piece together, so I'm sure that he will have additional things to, to discuss, but with that being said, I would move the resolution.
Is there any further discussion or questions from the committee members, from the council members, excuse me? Councilmember Wood.
And just to clarify, if someone were to come from a bargaining unit that was vested or had retirement into our system, into the council staff, they would retain that.
This is just brand-new employees after February 15.
15, yeah.
All right. Thank you. Other questions? All right, Councilmember Hussein, would I take a motion? Or did we already do that?
It's, it's been moved.
Sorry, it's been moved by Councilmember Hussein. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
We are to the Committee on Public Services.
Councilmember Dunbar.
I have a one leg and two microphones. This is the ordinance to eliminate the prohibition on street parking between two-
Sorry, Councilmember Dunbar. No, this is the decertification of Alliance Drive and a portion of Technology Boulevard.
Great. I'm off. Yeah, I got it. I'm doing yours, Councilmember, but sorry about that. Street decertification, Alliance Drive and a portion of Technology Boulevard. The gist of this is it's a road that we, we don't use anymore and is part of the construction of the new McLaren hospital system that's on the east side of town. The road technically doesn't exist anymore because it's already been torn up for construction, but we have to go through this process to decertify it at the state so that, and that affects our road funding and how it's allocated. So I move that.
It's been moved by Councilmember Dunbar. I'll just add that there was provision in the, in the land deal that we would vacate the street only if and after the sale went through and it's gone through. Obviously, there is a very tall construction project on that site, so it's to decertify that. Any further questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, we are to the late items from the Committee on Developmental Planning.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item we have before us is Brownfield Plan number 79 from- The first item we have before us is brownfield plan number 79 from the Michigan Realtors. Um, this is a nine-year brownfield plan. They are going to invest $9.2 million to completely redevelop and expand their Lansing headquarters located at the corner of Saginaw Street and Washington Avenue. They provided a, their presentation here before us, so I won't go into, you know, all of it, but some of the funds, they're asking to be reimbursed with new taxes generated by the plan. The project includes the narrowing the entrance to Washington Avenue, sidewalk improvements, landscaping in the roads right of way, and eliminating curb cuts on Saginaw and Washington. These are public infrastructure improvements that will improve pedestrian and biker safety and better connectivity to LCC and downtown and Old Town, and providing a better connectivity between the River Trail and Durant Park. And with that, because we've already had a presentation on it, I'm going to move the resolution.
The resolution before us is approving brownfield number 79. Is there any further discussion? Do we need a roll call vote on this? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the resolution approving an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for 1611 East Council Street, Councilmember Spitzley.
What he said? And it's, it's 12 years from completion, as we had, we had a presentation before us about Allen Place, and they came in last fall for the actual Oprah designation, and this action tonight will approve the Oprah certification. And with that, I'll move the resolution.
The resolution is before us, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, we are to the Committee of the Whole.
First thing we have is the mid-year 20, the 2020 mid-year budget amendment, Councilmember Hussein.
Yes, so, given to you just a short period of time ago is a substitute pertaining to that economic development and planning parking system and a new fee dealing with our street parking lot credit card processing. So what I'm going to do is let the mayor at this point speak to this, and then we'll take a look at the broader amendment and passage.
Mr. Mayor.
Do you want me to speak of the substitute?
Please, yes.
Yeah, and I apologize for this, this is, I'd say sort of last minute, but it's an issue that is unrelated to the budget amendment, but is related to something we've been hearing a lot, and I emailed everyone here, but I want to make sure for the record I can explain it. We instituted a new parking system, mostly in our downtown, but everywhere, you know, with the app and anywhere you want to park where there's pay for parking. One of the things that we have heard, and I'm sure you all have heard continually, is, you know, there's a, there's a minimum of one hour in the app, and it's a maximum of two hours, so, you know, why is the minimum an hour if you just want to stop in and get peanuts from the peanut shop, or, you know, stop in and buy, you know, whatever, your Thai from Kazakh's, why is it an hour? We want to adjust that. We also want to adjust some of the other parking issues, you know, people who are food service providers, they want to be able to park their cars on the street, and, and in the back, and, but they are restricted because of the way the app works out. And then the time, our staff wants to be a little bit more flexible with time limits for parking. We're still going to be the same two hours on Washington Square, so the traffic flows through, but on some of the side streets, they may make the time a little longer, and some of the areas not in the, in the actual strict downtown, they might make the areas a little longer. We want to make all these changes, but to do that, we also want to be consistent with what they're doing in East Lansing and other areas by instituting a 30-cent credit card fee. So we want to institute a 30-cent credit card fee, which is the same thing you have in East Lansing, but we want to reduce the time from, from an hour to 15 minutes minimum. That way, there won't be a revenue impact on the parking fund, but we'll be consistent with what's being done in our neighboring community and other communities. But I can't do that, I can't make these changes alone, I am not going to unilaterally create a parking fee that is done through council. So as I think I've indicated to many people here, my, my hope is that we can have this substitute adopted and then adopted along with the, with the budget amendment. If there's anybody uncomfortable with this and would rather we pull it and do it as a standalone fee, I'm willing to do that also, but because of the, the timing and because we like to get this out to the businesses, especially downtown, who want to make these changes, I'm asking for you to adopt that language in the substitute. Again, I'm not looking for controversy, so if there's any controversy, then I'll ask you to withdraw, and we can do it separately at another time. But we have been pretty open about this. Kathleen Edgely at DLI has put this out to, to the business owners to let them know, and I haven't heard any, any complaints. In fact, I've had two business owners tell me that they're excited about this because it'll, it'll offer them more options and be more consistent with the neighbors. So that is my request, I appreciate your willingness to, to consider this.
So before we can discuss whether we will accept this or not, we're going to need a motion to adopt the substitute, Councilmember Hussein.
I would move the adoption of the substitute.
There's been a motion in front of us, is there discussion on the substitute? All those in favor? Aye. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries, the substitute is before us. Now, we need to--
Yes? Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Since we're on the parking subject, real quick, Mayor, is there any way to look at, I know that I parked in a spot and used my allowed time, and I've heard this from other people too, that they will not let you go back into that same spot again for the rest of the day?
Not completely accurate, Mr. President, if I can answer that.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
So the, the way the app works is, if you, if you park in a zone, when your time is up, a half an hour. After a half an hour, it resets, and that's being done specifically so that people can't park there and then go over the two-hour limit. The two-hour limit is, you know, it's something that the businesses want. So for a half an hour, you can't park in that zone. You can park another block over in another zone immediately, or you can move your car and after a half an hour, you'll be able to park there again. So it's not the rest of the day, and it's done on purpose so that people don't leave their cars there all day and just keep refilling it through the app.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
So, Mr. Mayor, the budget amendment that you presented to us, the only change is the 30-cent fee and the fee schedule, everything else is the same that we've heard the last couple of times at council and committee of the whole. With that, we'll need a resolution, I'm sorry, a motion to adopt the budget amendment as substituted.
I would move the budget amendment as substituted.
All right, I'm going to-- Any discussion, Councilmember Wood?
I have some questions for the mayor. One of the issues that I have been concerned about was the lawsuit and the fact that we, when this was settled, we were told that it would be coming out of the sewer fee. We realize that that's part of this budget amendment. Could you please address that?
Yeah, when this was all put together, this was all put into general fund, all the pieces, the sewer fee is something that, that we were looking at, we were embroiled in a lawsuit with our, I believe, our insurance carrier, so there were pieces of it that dealt with, is it water, is it sewer? It was put in here because we're halfway through the budget and we needed somewhere to put it. We are going to reevaluate that for the June budget amendment, and if we can put it into the sewer fund, then we absolutely will. That was a conversation, but again, yeah, we had to determine if it was sewer or water, so that's, we're putting it here now, but that very well could change in June when we come to you for our, our final amendment. We're getting the legalities right on this, so we started with general fund to make sure that we can get the legalities right, but when the year ends and we close the books, it very well could be in the sewer fund unless legal says it can't, so we're going to navigate that and give you a final decision in June, we just didn't want to put it in the wrong place now.
Okay. My next question has to do, there's been talk about the potential of recouping, or I shouldn't say recouping, but not having to pay some of the IRS charges and that. I know you talked about the fact that the interim finance director had been successful in some of the state fees and having those. Could you address those issues?
Yeah, Shelby's been fantastic, Shelby Freyer's been fantastic. We navigated some of the state issues that we had, and we did not end up getting fines because of her work, so she's been great. Thank you all for creating a chief strategy officer who knows her thing with finance especially. We have submitted two of the three years, as you all know, this is, we found out that there were three years that the, that information was not provided to the federal government. We've been able to submit two of those three years. We are working on the third year, and as soon as the third year is submitted, we will absolutely file for a waiver of the fines and fees, and I'd say we're hopeful that we'll get that waiver from the federal government, so we have booked it. We have booked it as an expense for now, but again, when we come back to you in June, the hope is that we will have everything submitted and the feds will have waived those fees, but until we get that notification, we have to keep this as an expenditure. So as soon as the third one is, is complete, and everyone will be happy to know, we, we have already filed for our current year, so we're in '20, so we've filed for '19, so we are, we continue to be up to date now, but as soon as we get the final year from previous years completed and filed, we will request that waiver, and I can't, I can't guarantee it, but I think we're optimistic.
So any additional revenue, revenues, or reduction in expenditures that come in, we will be, we will be increasing what we're putting in, back into the reserve or rainy day fund?
Correct, reserves, the, the fund balance.
Well, it has many names, yes.
Well, we've got, we've actually got two different funds, again, I'm learning, you notice I'm learning, we've got two different funds, we've got a, so yes, the fund balance is where the dollars came from, and any dollars that come back, whether it's the federal fines and fees, whether it's moving the sewer funds, any of that, we will go, we will go right, we will give to you in a budget amendment in June to, yes, to be a positive, to positively go into the reserves.
And has there been any thought about using the remainder of the Townsend ramp to offset some of these unforeseen?
Yeah, those dollars are spoken for, they're, they were, they were baked into the budget. I think Shelby addressed that two times ago. One of the times she came up, she addressed that, but those dollars are already factored in.
Are factored in where?
Shelby, you want to help me out? Where we factored those in? Those are in, in one of the budgets, those are included. Jake, do you?
My understanding, it was a separate fund, my understanding was that the only items that were used for that had to do with a aerial truck for forestry and, I think, an ambulance, but there was--
Council allocated about half of it, and then the other half, I believe, is baked into the, it revolves into the budget, but you guys addressed that.
Ms. Freyer, can you please explain, or Mr. Brower?
Yeah, and so, there was the full Townsend proceeds, a majority of that was appropriated, there was a remainder of that that exists in the parking fund, and so we can include that as part of net transfers, and it will be reflected in the final budget amendment.
Yeah, that's right, so what they did was they put it into the parking fund, again, new, new finance team, wonderful people, they put it into the parking fund, not realizing that they didn't have, didn't have to put it into the parking fund, so that will be re-reflected into, into our budget that will then move into reserves.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to--
Yes.
--to get to.
It will go into the reserves, all of those dollars will also move into the reserves.
Okay.
But we're not spending it in this resolution?
We're not spending it in this resolution, it's, I think, it was, it was, it was all put into the parking fund, again, we didn't, of the many things that we had to go through when we brought in our new team, we didn't have a chance to discuss the, the allocation from this body a year and a half ago, and again, those dollars are supposed to stay in reserves or put in the parking fund, we will have that all worked out for the June amendment.
Thank you.
Into the reserves.
And I have a question too, maybe for the mayor or for the folks that now have put themselves on the hot seat. The dollars that we're talking about moving out of reserves, not all of those are being spent correctly, you're booking them as potential liabilities, so there's still some money there, and that, so it's not necessarily we have spent all those dollars, but we're following Gatsby guidelines and basically saying, we could incur these expenses, so we can't, we can't look at them as, as part of our financial savings.
That's correct.
Okay. I like it when people tell me I'm correct. Thank you. Are there other questions on the budget amendment? Seeing, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I, I got a comment, I'm going to, I'm going to be voting no on this, substitute for, or, I'm sorry, the budget amendment, and I spoke with you earlier the reason why, and I just want to let public know, with Lepfa, I mean, that's a $250,000 concession we're asking them to take, and I haven't seen any other department take that kind of concession, and with the recent coronavirus, they've had to cancel about $1.5 million worth of venues, and this is what I'm being told, and that's going to obviously cause for layoffs, and I can't support layoffs, so that's why I'm a no on this.
Ms. Freyer, could you address Lepfa's financial station situation?
Sure, so originally, when this amendment was brought up, we took a peek at Lepfa's fund balance, which was over a million bucks when they ended 2019, so to ask them to take a 25% reduction from their fund balance or reserves, at the time, obviously, this wasn't known, and that's what's included in our budget amendment. However, we have asked all of our partners that we work with, including Board of Water and Light, is obviously a large one of ours, in addition to all the other folks that we work with in the community, to also look at all of those contracts to see how we can get some dollars back. Obviously, we were taking a two-thirds reduction to our fund balance, so to ask somebody to take a 25% out of their reserves seems very reasonable, given the situation now. Had communication with both Scott and Jennifer, their CFO, about making sure that their cash flow isn't impacted by this, meaning that they can still make payroll at all times. And so again, this is a mid-year budget, a mid-year budget amendment that we're asking them to take that reduction. I've already had the conversation with Scott, that if they can't get to the 250, we need to talk about that before the, the June final amendment comes through. That was what I asked, that was kind of the, the initial, here's what we'd like to get to, now given the circumstances. I still feel like we should approve the budget today, as is, and we can amend in the final budget in June if necessary.
I would just like to also point out that not passing this budget amendment means we have to look to cut $7 million out of the city expenditures, and that would be far greater a likelihood of layoff. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Six to two. I honestly don't know what's next. The collective bargaining agreement--
There are other items regarding bereavement policy and parking subsidies that were agreed to, but we won't bore you with the details. With that being said, I will, I would move the resolution.
The resolution before us, any further discussion? Councilmember Wood?
Just one question, and I see Shelby's still here.
Don't leave, Shelby.
The 3% takes effect when? The wage increase takes effect when?
That'd be based on each collective bargaining agreement, so for some, like police and fire would revert back.
Sorry, for 243, the one we're ratifying now?
February 15th, I think was the date. Yeah, it's, they don't retro back in their collective bargaining agreement, as I understand it, so it would be the date in which the contract was ratified, or February 15th, I think is the date.
Can we get that answered?
You're asking when the 3% wage increase would start? They didn't, to my understanding, didn't, didn't negotiate any sort of retro payment back for the beginning of the year, so as the contract gets ratified is when the 3% would begin.
Okay, when they ratified it, or when we vote on it, which are we talking about?
So there should be a date in which the contract takes effect, in which this council, I think, is up to approve it tonight, so as long as that date in which was negotiated that, that the CBA would start is when the 3% would begin.
Okay, the, the contract is from February 1st, 2019, so that would mean a year's
You'd have to ask your labor negotiator specifics.
Okay. If, if we could get that, it's not going to affect my vote at all, but if we could get that, I would appreciate it. No, that's, I just need, I would like the information. Thank you.
Okay, the motion before us is to approve the CBA with the Teamsters Local 243 CTP unit. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Next item is collective bargaining agreement for the Teamsters 243 supervisory unit. Councilmember Hussein.
Sorry, again, this is a two-year contract, again, this includes a year-one increase of 3%, a year-two increase of 2.5%. By and large, this is the same contract that we just approved for our clerical, technical, and professional units, so with that being said, I move the resolution.
Sure. It's been moved by Councilmember Hussein to ratify collective bargaining agreement, Teamsters Local 243 supervisory. Any further discussion besides the question about effective date? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries.
Moving to the late items from Committee of the Whole, we have the deficit elimination plan for the special asset capital project fund.
Ms. Freyer, would you mind just giving us a quick update on the DEP for the special asset, I see that Jake left? I know it's a, it's a pro forma, we have to do-- I know it's a pro forma, we have to do this to reduce the deficit in these funds, but...
So as Jake mentioned earlier in Cow, we have a statutory requirement by the Department of Treasury if we have a deficit in one of our funds to pass a resolution or a deficit elimination plan to cover that. So that's what's before you tonight.
Other questions from council members? Seeing none, I'll need a motion from Council Vice President Hussein.
So moved.
It's been moved to adopt the deficit elimination plan. Don't go anywhere. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. The next though.
And next, we have the late item, the 2020 general obligation bonds for capital improvements.
Ms. Ferrer, this relates to the parking fund. Would you like to elaborate?
Yep, actually, I'm going to go ahead and bring up my bond counsel and municipal advisor, and they'll give you a quick summary.
Oh, yeah, while we're waiting for them to come up, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to address the ratification question.
So the answer is, in essence, they get the 3% and the 2.5% right now because they're in year two. So they're going to get a 5.5% increase, but they don't get the 3% retro back on former pay. So they will, as soon as it's ratified by both parties, they will get the first-year increase, which is the 3, and the second-year increase is the 2.5. It's not retro, but they immediately get the 5.5.
We'll let them know we just ratified it. Bond counsel, a question, if you could just do high level on the three bond proposals in front of us, then we'll just take them separately as motions. And the first one is the general obligation bonds for capital improvements.
That's right, thank you. So capital improvement bond resolution is a not-to-exceed resolution for $13,500,000 for projects presented earlier related to certain parking structure improvements within the city. Authorizes... Certain authorized officers to complete the sale of the bonds and the issuance, to set the terms, and authorizes the city's tax pledge, publication of the notice of sale, and all of the other requirements to issue these bonds, sell them to the investing market. Approval here does not obligate the issuance, but it certainly authorizes everyone to move forward as long as market conditions remain favorable. I can...
Thank you.
I would move the issuance and sale of the 2020 limited tax general obligation bonds for capital improvements.
Any questions from council members? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Motion... I'm sorry? Opposed? No? Okay.
And next, we have the refunding building authority bonds.
That's right. This is actually the city council's authorization of its limited tax pledge in favor of refunding bonds, refunding 2014 tax increment finance authority bonds, and 2014 Lansing building authority bonds. Resolutions will be considered by those entities separately. In fact, the Tifa considered its resolution on February 7th. So this just authorizes the city's continued support of those bonds, which would be refunded for a savings.
Any questions? Mr. Councilmember Hussein.
I would move the issuance and sale of refunding of building authority bonds and tax increment finance authority bonds.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
And next, we have the general obligation refunding bonds.
Gentlemen?
One more, not to exceed $2,300,000. This would refund 2010 recovery zone economic development bonds. Those are actually taxable bonds, but under a federal program, provided a credit to the city. So in exchange for that program, these refunding bonds would be issued on a tax exempt basis, again, for a savings.
Are there questions from the committee? Seeing none, Councilmember Wood.
This was used for road work, wasn't it?
I think this is for the city garage, if I recall correctly.
Oh, that's right. Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, Council Vice President Hussein.
I would move the issuance and sale of limited tax general obligation refunding bonds.
The motion has been moved. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, please say nay. Motion carries.
Okay, next, we have the resolution extending the mayor's declaration of an emergency.
Councilmember Hussein.
So by law, the mayor can only, sorry, issue an emergency, a state of emergency, sorry, for up to seven days without the consent of this body. So we would have to, in order for him to extend that by way of resolution, we would have to actually support that. So what this resolution would do is extend the declaration, my understanding, is to April 10th, correct? Okay. With that being said, I move the resolution.
The resolutions before us, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries.
And next, we have adopting the Lansing City Council exposure mitigation measures for COVID-19.
Councilmember Hussein.
Okay, so this is, again, this is a resolution to adopt the Lansing City Council COVID-19 exposure mitigation measures, which include all standing committee meetings being canceled and committees being discharged of all items which are essential to city business, life, safety, or welfare. The essential decisions will be considered by the Committee of the Whole and the City Council during regularly scheduled Monday evening sessions. And all Committee of the Whole meetings will be rescheduled for 5:00 p.m. to ensure enough time for deliberations before council at 7:00 p.m. That being said, I move the resolution.
Thank you. And just any other discussion? I'm sorry. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries.
And finally, we have a resolution suspending Council Rule 46.
Vice President Hussein.
I would move the suspension of Rule 46, allowing for, I'm sorry, which would permit participation by remote access technology, including conference calling, real-time streaming, or other platforms on an action item at regular special council meetings, and official action being taken at a council meeting that includes a vote on an item for which a council member participated. By remote access technology will be binding on the council and not subject to change, except as may be provided by parliamentary procedure. And that by the passage of this resolution, each council member by his or her affirmative vote commits and agrees that he or she will not change his or her vote at a future time when the declared state of emergency for the city is terminated, and after the state of emergency is lifted, will by resolution ratify each and every action taken in a meeting during the emergency, be it vote on a resolution or ordinance. Sorry. With that being said, I move the resolution.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussein. It's been moved... I will address this just a little bit because this is the last one on this topic. Given that the mayor has declared a state of emergency closing down City Hall, the governor's further ordered school closures and no gatherings in larger than 50, it's our aim to minimize the risk of our staff and the public in public meetings. But in some cases, it may be necessary to bring council members in virtually. And right now, our council rules prohibit that. As soon as the state of emergency is over, we will reinstate Rule 46 and require mandatory participation in person for quorum and for voting. It is our plan that council members who are able to will still meet here in chambers, and public will be able to address council members here or through writing. We will continue to encourage the public to watch our meetings if you don't wish to address council on television or through streaming services to keep yourself safe and at home. We hope we do not have to go this far, but for long, but we wanted this in our back pocket should it become necessary. As of now, we plan to have a council meeting next week, but I've been assured by the city attorney that as long as the mayor submits his budget through electronic means and it's posted on the website before Monday, it satisfies the charter requirement to notify the city council of his budget intentions. So it might not be necessary for us to meet next week. Please stay tuned on that subject. We'll make that decision Thursday. I appreciate all of your understanding and cooperation in this time of uncertainty. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries.
We are to ordinances for adoption by the Committee of the Whole. We have an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, to amend the Lansing codified ordinances by amending Chapter 294, Section 294.02D, to eliminate the requirement that the city attorney shall be the legal advisor to the Police and Fire Retirement Board, as read a second time by its title. The ordinance was reported from the Committee of the Whole and is on the order of immediate passage.
Councilmember Wood.
Thank you. As stated for the public hearing, what this does is just change one provision in the ordinance for police and fire, which would change the word from Shell to May. And we have been asked by the retirement board and the chair, Eric Wolford, and the members of the board to pass this resolution, ordinance change, excuse me. With that, I would move the ordinance.
The ordinance has been moved by Councilmember Wood. Is there any further discussion? With that, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Betts. Councilmember Garza. Councilmember Hussein. Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Spadafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
AEA's zero and A's, the ordinance is adopted.
Councilmember Wood.
I would ask for immediate effect.
Immediate effect has been asked for. All those in favor of immediate effect, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next.
We have an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, to amend the Lansing codified ordinances by amending Chapter 292, Section 292.09, to eliminate the requirement that the city attorney shall be the legal advisor to the Employees Retirement System Board, as read a second time by its title. The ordinance was reported from the Committee of the Whole and is on the order of immediate passage.
Councilmember Wood.
Thank you. Again, this is changing the word from the city attorney Shell to May, be the legal advisor for the board for the employees' retirement system. We have a letter from Chairperson Dennis Parker asking the council to support this change, and the retirement board concurred with that. With that, I would move the ordinance at this time.
It's been moved by Councilmember Wood. Is there any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Betts. Councilmember Garza. Councilmember Hussein. Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Spadafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
AEA's zero and A's, the ordinance is adopted.
Councilmember Wood.
I would move for immediate effect, please.
Any... All those in favor of immediate effect, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Immediate effect is ordered.
Okay, we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. If you... That's the yellow sheet in the back. If you wish to address the city council, now's your last opportunity to put your name on that yellow sheet. And in the meantime, we're to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Vice President.
I would move that all items be considered read in full, and that the proper referrals be made by the president.
It's been moved by Councilmember Hussein. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
We have items from the city clerk regarding the man's boards, commissions, and authorities.
Place them on file.
Department of Neighborhood and Citizen Engagement Annual Report.
Committee of the Whole.
And Lansing Housing Commission Financial Reports.
Committee of the Whole.
Items from the mayor regarding a noise special permit for E.T. McKenzie.
General Services.
Funding application for local bridge program for fiscal year 2023.
Mr. Mayor, are those timely? It's the local bridge funding program. Ways and Means for now.
Street name change, renaming City Market Drive to Riverfront Drive.
Committee of the Whole.
Annual Consolidated Strategy and Plan Submission for CDBG Funds.
Committee of the Whole.
Collective Bargaining Agreement, Teamsters 243 CTP.
Committee of the Whole and place them on file.
Collective Bargaining Agreement, Teamsters 243 Supervisory.
Committee of the Whole, place them on file.
Reappointment of Cassandra Nelson to the Historic District Commission.
Committee on Development Planning.
Items from Councilmember Betts, an ordinance to eliminate the prohibition on street parking between 2:00 a.m. and 5:00 a.m.
Public Service.
Ordinance to eliminate annual and temporary permits for overnight street parking.
Public Service.
Ordinance to regulate on-street parking during snow emergencies.
Public Service.
Communications and Petitions, an affidavit of disclosure from Charisse Fleming of the Lansing Police Department.
Ethics Board.
Affidavit of Disclosure, Michael Van Beek of the Lansing Police Department.
The Ethics Board.
Claim Appeal, John Blumer for 435 in Grass and Lee fees.
Committee on General Services.
And a joint appointment, Monica Jainer, to the Inland County City of Lansing Community Corrections Advisory Board.
Committee on Public Service.
We are to remarks by...
I'm sorry, yes.
I'd like to address item four. That's the Community Corrections Board that normally goes to Public Safety. It deals with...
That was probably a title. Okay. Committee... Mr. Clerk, please refer that to the Committee on Public Safety.
Okay, we are to remarks by council members.
I have one remark I just want to report. The Lansing School of the School Board of Education has made the determination to suspend their search for superintendent at this time in relation to the COVID-19 outbreak. They plan to have a meeting this week and Wednesday at 6:30 p.m. for public input and decided against bringing a large group of public together to provide input and transmission. So that will be canceled, as well as their Thursday, March 19, 6:30 p.m. board meeting will be canceled. The school board president has announced that scheduled meetings will be allowed... Replacements for those meetings will be announced shortly, and they anticipate picking their search process back up in April. Did they give you enough time, Mr. Clerk?
Yes.
Very good. Any other council members wish to make final comments? Thank you.
Remarks by the mayor.
I'll just add that things are moving so quickly that while we've been sitting here, the governor issued an executive order that people... That we can't have any more than 50 people in one place meeting. I think it was at 6:40 she issued it, so things are moving fast.
Okay, public comment on city government-related matters. We have David Reed, followed by Lilian Young.
Good evening, members of the city council and Mayor Shore. My name is David Reed. I'm a resident of the City of Lansing. I'm a Christian Democrat, and I'm in a joint operating agreement with the American Civil Liberties Union. I bring legal actions to clarify and expand the rights of the poor homeless. And for you new members of the Lansing City Council, you're no doubt unaware of the fact that this volatile politic is attempting to flee and elude major legal actions that point out that rescue missions are actually concentration camps. Those who have to work for free in them to stay there are actually slaves and with no right to like. If you check with the city attorney, he'll show you the major cases I brought involving the City of Lansing and that I argued before the Michigan Supreme Court. The problem I'm having at this point is that it would appear that Mayor Shore and Representative Sarah Anthony are ganging up on me to commit a crime. And the crime is MCLA 750.478, wilful neglect of duty. What happened is I got banished from the Capital Area District Library on January 2nd because there was a small insect on my sleeve, which I killed. And this is the code of conduct from the CADL, and it states that no patrons are to have fleas, lice, or bedbugs. Can anyone identify what a flea is, lice, or a bedbug, if they see it? This is a world full of insects. And quite frankly, to banish me because there was a small insect on my sleeve is outrageous. And as you saw, those rules wouldn't have banished me if I had a tarantula on my leg. It's fleas, lice, and bedbugs that they zeroed in it. The Fourth Amendment protects me from arbitrary and capricious rules brought by the library. And I'm claiming that I'm exempt from these rules because of the Fourth Amendment, and I'm asking you folks to save me from Mayor Shore and from citizen advocate Mark Lawrence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Lilian Young, followed by Daniel K. Arnold.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Lilian Young.
I am a graduate student at MSU, and I live in the First Ward. And last Wednesday, before everything happened with COVID-19, I was given notification on my car, a little flyer that said I would have to pay to park in front of my house. As a graduate student, I am also an art student, and I don't have that much money. I spend about half of my paycheck on supplies alone, which means about every two weeks or so, I spend about $400 in order to sustain supplies, to make pieces that I need to make for grades, in order to keep my scholarships, in order to keep my insurance from MSU, and I really don't have it in my budget to pay $125 every year because I will probably forget to, in order to park in front of my house. But I also live in a neighborhood where I know for a fact not a lot of my neighbors have that in their budget. I live in a household where there are three of us, and we all have individual cars, and we have one driveway. So it's really not possible for all three of us to budget to buy three $125 permits, especially when two of us have to park out on the street all the time. And also, I don't think this permit really takes into account what if we have, I'm not from here, I'm from Texas, so if my family drives up, or if I have relatives from Indiana come and visit me, I don't want to have to say, hey, you can come stay with me at my place, but be sure to stop by, like, downtown so you can get that three-day parking pass and you won't get a ticket. And even if you have the parking pass, if you're in a household like mine where you have multiple cars, there's a chance that you can only buy one ticket. And if you have multiple cars and they don't have it, those tickets for view parking between 2:00 and 5:00 are going to build up and can eventually get above $125. I also have neighbors where, one of them is a single mom with two kids, she could not pay some bills for a while, and she had to work out that. I have neighbors who are handicapped. Essentially, this whole permit thing, it does not make sense, maybe for places in Lansing that have more money, but for the First Ward where I live, we don't really have that much money to go around. I had to get my car fixed, and that completely screwed up my budget for, like, three weeks. So I ask that you guys please get rid of this permit and please let it so we can just park in front of our houses at night and not have to worry about a police officer coming giving us a ticket when we're trying to rest so we can go and work, so we can make a living and just have a good life. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Daniel K. Arnold.
I'm Daniel Arnold. I adore my city. This region means the world to me, and I care about everyone here. Many aspects of life in Lansing have been discontinued right now due to the coronavirus. Things are changing. Police officers are becoming limited when they are needed most. So much is going on. My heart goes out to a friend who needs diapers for a two-year-old, and the many vulnerable homeless who see themselves social distance out of enough shelter for everyone. It's like all the shelters are saying, we only hold this many people, so it's just, there's no way that they're going to have a place to go, so it's just going to be terrible. But doors are closing, and the homeless are limited to small-capacity day shelters. What can we do? Are there any buildings not in use that could keep the most vulnerable populations off the street? The nonprofits can only do so much, considering opening additional building rooms such as Lansing Centers or abandoned buildings to accommodate the poor, who usually fill the shelter to old capacity at times of high volumes. This is a state of homeless emergency. Please do something, any of you. Let's form a focus group to meet these needs online. Mayor Shore, Adam Hussein, Brian T. Jackson, Jeremy Garza, Patricia Spitzey, Carol Wood, Peter Spadefor, Brandon Betts, Kathy Dunbar. I'm willing to meet with any of you for a phone conference. This is doable. Please reach out to me on Facebook, Guy Smiley, G-U-Y-S-M-I-L-I-E. I just, you know, we're not talking about this, maybe you just don't know that, like, everyone's going to the different shelters, just saying, Jim O. This is where all the mental health consumers in our whole city, Jim O. 20 people can come in. BOA, 20 people can come in at a time. The outreach, everybody likes some low number, like 20 or 30 can be there at a time. I don't know where all these people who are homeless and are very health vulnerable to what the coronavirus does. Those people don't know where to go. They're going to have a lockdown at the City Rescue Mission to keep people there all day, just keep them from each other, but there's a lot of homeless out here that are unaccounted for, that are just gonna, they're just gonna be like, where do I go? They're gonna be lining up in front of places, and then the police are having less action than before. I'm just really, really, my heart grieves for them because these people have more to think about than just toilet paper. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our final speaker.
That is our final item for the evening. I just want to note, this was one of our longer meetings, but it makes up for all the short ones that I got you through in the last couple of weeks. So with that, we are adjourned.